It's called to order the regular Sparks City Council Meeting of 6/11/2012 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson, here. Council members Ratty, absent, Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kerrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
Acting City Attorney Iting.
Here.
Mayor Quorum.
Okay, if you'd all stand for the invocation Pastor Kyle Bateson from the Living Stones Church. Welcome Kyle. Pastor?
Thank you. It's a privilege to be here with you guys. My name's Kyle. I'm the pastor over at Living Stones Church and one of the things is Living Stones, we really want to be a church that's in the city, for the city, fallen suit after Jesus because he looked at the brokenness of the world. He just didn't sit back. But, I don't know if this thing's working. If he, uh...
It is, I think it is.
So, Jesus didn't sit back and see the brokenness, but he actually stepped into the brokenness of the world. And that's what I love about everybody here. You guys all have a desire to see the city just benefit and you're here for the benefit of the city. So, join me in prayer, please. Father God, thank you that we get to be a part of the work that you're doing here to bless this city. Thank you for these men and women and the wisdom that you've given them and the great honor it is for them to lead us here. And I just pray that you would bring wisdom down from you. You know all things and you know what needs to be done here so the people of Sparks can benefit and can live great lives. And so, God, I just pray that you'd be here with us and your wisdom would be known. In your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you for those kind words Pastor. Appreciate it. If you'd remain standing for the, what is it, the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Iting, would you lead us, please?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is comments from the public. I have one speaking card. If there's anyone else that would like to speak under public comment, please fill out the card and we'll give you three minutes. I have William Puchard. Come on, come on down, William.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is William Puchard and I am the president of the Sons and Daughters of Erin. We're the local Irish Heritage Organization. You may be familiar with us. We're that group of Irish that's always hauling the Blarney Castle at the annual hometown Christmas parade for the last 25 years. This past Saturday, we held our annual picnic at Longford Park, named after your sister city in Ireland. The event kicked off our re-adoption of the park, first adopted by my predecessor, Janine McGinley, and the officers of Sons and Daughters of Erin 15 years ago. We plan, we plan to engage in cleanup efforts and we are working on a plan to raise some money for improvements in the park. As local governments are experiencing budget challenges, we hope to have, or, we hope to have other organization engage in park adoptions as well. It is my understanding that on occasion your counterparts in Longford come over to the rail city to visit. My organization stands ready to assist you in extending any hospitality you might towards them. I'd also like to say thank you on behalf of both my organization and the Nevada Society of Scottish Clans to the Sparks Heritage Museum, who has just concluded a Celtic exhibit this past month. The museum asked all of the local Celtic organizations and individuals to loan items for the exhibit this past spring. And the result was a wonderful display that seemed to generate some new interest in the museum. We really do appreciate their efforts in spreading Celtic culture. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, Mary Cooper-Smith, you want to speak now? Not at 6.2? And then Donna, do you want to speak under public comment or at 6.2?
Public comment, please.
Okay, you'll be next.
Good afternoon.
Go ahead, Mary. You can have a seat if you want.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Marcy Cooper-Smith.
Marcy, I'm sorry.
And I am a volunteer at the Senior Law Project, which is located at the Senior Center at Ninth and Sutro. And I would like to speak on behalf of the Senior Law Project. It is an exclusive legal provider to seniors, free of charge. It provides diverse legal services such as wills, foreclosure advice, evictions, and financial senior abuse, which unfortunately is becoming more and more evident. Seniors coming to the Senior Law Project are often very upset, they are dealing with distressful situations, and they don't know what their options may be. I see firsthand, as a volunteer at the Senior Law Project, how wonderful the staff interacts with those seniors. They treat them with respect, they listen to their situations, they provide them guidance, and they give them answers. The Senior Law Project has been offering a service to a part of our population, which unfortunately is becoming more and more neglected. We need to make sure that the Senior Law Project continues. A way of ensuring this would be a ballot initiative for the public to be able to decide on additional funding. Please remember, seniors are people too. I thank you, Mr. Mayor and the City Council, for the opportunity to address you today.
Thanks, Marcy. Donna Klontz? And then I have one for Grady and for Stephen. Do you want to speak at 6.2, Grady? Okay, 6.2, okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Donna Klontz. I am a member of the Reno Senior Citizens Advisory Committee and have been involved for quite a few years in senior issues in the area. I started out when I moved here as a retired person myself, a volunteer with the Medicare SHIP program, which is the state health insurance information program, which teaches folks who are interested in being advisors, one-on-one with seniors who have Medicare questions, how to navigate the system, how to solve Medicare problems, how to choose among the many things that seniors choose from when they become 65 years old and are ready to take advantage of the Medicare health programs. And believe it or not, these volunteers all over the country are actually the mainline customer service representatives for the Medicare program for all seniors all over the, all over the country. So, in that capacity, a few years ago when I started that, I got to meet with a lot of our Washoe County Senior Centers, from Sparks, from Reno, from the north end of the county, from the south end of the county, everyone who needed, needed help, and discovered that we have an abundance of great folks here who are doing a lot of volunteer work to fill the gaps that, that, that exist in our senior programs. Because frankly, our senior population has been growing by leaps and bounds over the last few years. As the information that was presented in your staff report for your 6.2 agenda item, it's being proposed and talked about among all of the leaders of the, of the, of the region that the one cent ad valorem tax that was passed back in 1985 is just not enough to support the needs of our seniors today. And it's going to take all of the leaders of our area, our Sparks City Council, the Reno City Council, the County Commission, and all of the citizens who either are seniors themselves or who have seniors in their families that they're concerned about because the population growth is growing so fast. The stats that you have in your plan show that the senior population is growing faster than any other segment of Washoe County community. 25% of our folks are now over 55, and I think Sparks is about 25% of Washoe County population itself. So, that group is as big as the population of Sparks alone. And that we're only serving about 8% of these seniors today that need specific services such as what Marcy described with senior legal services, which includes all folks at all income levels and so on. But addition, those are, that's the program that feeds people that are hungry. That's the program that finds the medical programs for people that don't have enough money to pay their own way. And so, the, the need is, is huge and it's going to take the leaders of our communities to say, it's time that perhaps we ask our communities whether or not they think it's as important as we do and promote that, that a two cent ad valorem tax increase. And I know you're considering that today and I'm here to, to tell you that I've seen it in all the years I've been a volunteer out there and welcome your, your discussion today and hope that you will join the voices of constituents out there who are, are saying that seniors are, are, need our help. So, thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Anyone else under public comment? Yes, Stephen, are you Mr. Jacobs?
Good he, excuse me. Good afternoon. I'm Stephen Jacobs. I'm the Chair of the Reno Senior Citizens Advisory Committee and I'm also an active SHIP counselor. And I spend one day a week at the Senior Center doing SHIP counseling. And I have seen the number of seniors that come into the center to help grow almost daily. And I've seen the staff shrink almost daily, just as you've all seen your staff shrinking. And as you've heard, the seniors are a growing sector of the population and the funding for them goes back to, I think, 1985. And we have to do something to plan ahead to keep the services paced with the need. And that's why I want to encourage you and congratulate you on the item that you have on the agenda to, to try and raise more money for senior services. They really are necessary. People, if, if we don't get them, people will end up in nursing homes or assisted living and it's going to cost us all far more money than if we could keep people in their own homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Anyone who want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion? Is it working or not? Mr. Smith?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a move, mo, we have a motion.
A little mojo.
Motion? We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Kerrigan to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. See if this works. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Next is recommendation to approve minutes, consideration possible approval of minutes of the regular Sparks City Council Meeting of May 29, 2012. Any omissions or corrections? Looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the minutes as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Next is announcements, presentations, items, and items of special interest. Proclamation, United States Army Week. Is there someone here from the Army to receive this? I didn't see anyone. What's that?
We have no Army guys.
You want me to, and Navy guy, you want me to take Army guys? We got, we got, we got an Army, a retired Army general out here better than...
Well, we'll just read it anyway, Mike. Is that all right? Whereas the United States Army was established by the First Continental Congress on the 14th day of June, 1775. And whereas the United States Army exists to defend the freedom of our citizens and our nation's security interests. And whereas many citizens of Sparks have served their nation and given the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our freedoms as members of the United States Army. And whereas it is proper to recognize the United States Army annually on its birthday and to thank those who have served and those who are presently serving. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim June 11 through June 16, 2012, United States Army Week and urge all citizens to join me in this salute to express our gratitude to those who have served and those who are now serving to protect our nation and its freedoms. Thank you.
Go Army.
Go Army. No show. Okay, next is proclamation for Reno Rodeo Days. I know we have some peo, whoa. I know we have some rodeo boys up there. Somebody want to come down? Come on, Gamick, come on down, you guys. Welcome, gentlemen. Have a seat. Proclamation. Whereas the Reno Rodeo will be held June 14 through the 23rd, 2012, and whereas it is the historic 93rd year, the Reno Rodeo has been an important tradition in our northern Nevada area. And whereas the Reno Rodeo is made possible with the assistance of hundreds of volunteers and thousands of fans and spectators who enjoy every minute of the exciting variety of rodeo events and entertainment. And whereas the Reno Rodeo Foundation is a nonprofit group dedicated to keeping the history and grandeur of rodeo alive. And whereas since 1986, the Reno Rodeo Foundation as the giving arm of the Reno Rodeo has donated more than 5.1 million to educational scholarships and special children's charities, high school rodeo programs, and literacy programs. And whereas started by community leaders, the Reno Rodeo has grown into an important competition on the rodeo circuit, attracting top cowboys and cowgirls and are offering top prizes that truly make it the wild, wildest, richest rodeo in the West. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the Sparks, City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim June 12 through the 23rd, 2012, Reno Rodeo Days.
Many of you probably saw me with Summit Engineering here before, but this year I'm also 2012 President of Reno Rodeo. With me is John Tipton, our second Vice President. In the back is Bill Birdelson. He's our second Vice President-elect and also Dick Gamick, a longtime Director. And we thank you very much for this and appreciate it.
Well, thank you guys for all you do. Gamick, you look good in that hat. Got to wear it more often. You know, I, I just wanted to say thank the Reno Rodeo Association for all they do in the community. You know, every time I look around, you're doing a clothes drive for somebody or something in the community and it's, it's just wonderful what you guys do. Mr. Lawson?
I want to say too, you guys supported our Free Fishing Day for our Sparks Rotary Club. We just had it, had a fantastic weekend and thank you guys so much for your support financially on that.
Well, thank you. You know, it takes a lot of volunteers and we've got a real good family of volunteers that work hard year-round, so that's what makes it go.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Don't quit your gate, day job, Gamick, okay? Okay, proclamation, Think Local. Is there someone here to pick up this proclamation? Come on down, Mike. Proclamation. Whereas the Think Local program is a community initiative to build awareness, build awareness of the economic benefits of doing business locally in the Truckee Meadows. And whereas the program is designed to enhance the livability of our community, the stability and diversity of our local economy, and the retention and expansion of local businesses while increasing awareness of personal, community, and economic benefits of choosing to think local first. And whereas the City of Sparks supports the Think Local campaign and encourages city employees, residents, and businesses to do the same whenever possible. And whereas the City of Sparks recognizes that thinking local provides an opportunity for economic gain from a business locale, business locally. And whereas whenever possible, the City of Sparks should purchase goods or services from local vendors and suppliers and when needed, from online companies with a presence within the state of Nevada. And whereas purchase from the companies that hire local employees, contract with companies that have a local presence, eat locally produced food when available, support growers, local distributors, and locally owned food establishments. This also helps cut down travel and carbon emissions. And whereas support of our local nonprofits and serve or otherwise engage and invest in our local community as a citizen and a volunteer. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim June 11, 2012, as Think Local Day and proclaim the City of Sparks as a part of the Think Local Coalition to create jobs and stimulate our local economy.
First of all, thank you. I'm Mike Kazmersky, President and CEO of EDON. And I just wanted to reiterate this proclamation is really just the first step in a very broad-based initiative to get people to think about how we can do things more locally. Our local businesses are the heart and soul of our community. Are there ways we could be more effective at getting them work, whether it's contracting locally, purchasing locally, hiring locally? And as you noticed, the proclamation highlighted eating locally, serving on local boards and commissions, and supporting local nonprofits. So, it's a pretty broad-based initiative, but I want to thank the City of Sparks and certainly the council here and the mayor for taking the lead. You are the first government agency to sign on board. The other two will do so in the next week or so. And we look at the government support behind it locally to bring on the business support and ultimately the citizen support because just a 10% shift in local purchasing can add 2,000 jobs to this region and over $50 million of economic impact. And really, that's what it's all about, putting people back to work. So, I want to thank you again for, for your support of this initiative and for all you do to support our community. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions or comments? Ms. Ratty?
I just wanted to know if you have any connection with the Conscious Community Network in town? Are you familiar with it?
We have, I have not personally reached out, worked with Dave Asher and others and their bi-local initiatives and tried to bring on all these other groups that are doing bits and pieces of the local, how do we work together as local? And try and rally everyone behind an initiative to take a minute to think about how could we do things more effectively locally? And, and the more we get on the bus, the more effective we'll be. So, I will check with the, the, what was it?
It's called Conscious Community Network. And this is a group, it's a very grassroots effort that's been going on in our community. And I want to say, at least for a decade, that's really supported the bi-local, support local movement, local foods, the whole, whole piece. It's very volunteer-driven, but I want, they've got a lot of people involved and they've got a track record of 10 years and I agree. I mean, we've been coming at it from a bunch of different angles, but I want to make sure we're not leaving out some of the grassroots folks who may not hit somebody's radar screen but are doing some good work.
No, I appreciate that. We'll definitely reach out to them.
Thanks.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, thank you for coming and bringing this forward to the council. It's been an item that we've had some pretty serious discussions over the last six, eight months in regards to this and I, and I hope that EDON can take and interface with our city attorney and our purchasing manager and all the things on out there. I'm sitting at a list right now that we're getting ready to approve maybe eight or nine contracts and I would bet that most of them are out-of-state contracts and things. It's all because our hands are tied. There's things that we cannot do with this based upon state Nevada laws. So, I hope that in the next coming months that we can get some roundtable discussions with legal and purchasing about what we need to change the state legislature to go ahead and enact a bi-locally program. There's real hurdles to overcome, so.
Councilmember, I absolutely agree that there are some, some constraints out there, but if we can all think locally, there are often times where we can maybe not necessarily be so stringent in the following of what's written and understand the intent of the law so that we do, when the opportunity arises, reach out to our local businesses in a way that allows them to be competitive. And really, it's, it's a combination of, there are laws that must be followed, but there's also a way to make sure our local businesses are effective in their competition. And sometimes it's as simple as a phone call or as simple as a, an opportunity to help them through a process where a much bigger firm with a whole team of contracting individuals descends on a contract in a very professional way and appears to be the right solution when the guy down the street is really the best way to go. So, absolutely agree with you.
If there's some way we get that message on out there, because right now we're, we're pretty well tied a lot of things. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else?
I was just going to add on and saying, sometimes there are some laws that need to be changed.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'm impressed with Mike and what you've done in the short time you've been with EDON. I see you making big strides and big changes. This is just one of the many that you're doing and getting everybody under the same tent. It makes a lot of sense and, and you're doing a wonderful job. Keep it up. And you got, you know, you've got a big supporter in me. So, let's keep going because we, we need what you're doing. And, and I like what you said, measurable results. That's a big thing with me. So, looking forward to that.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you for being here. Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Mr. Kerrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull, nothing's working. 5.8.
5.8. Anyone else? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item 5.2 and 5.12.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, looking for a motion? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion when we pass items 5.1, 5.3 to 5.7, and 5.9 to 5.11 as outlined by staff.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to, by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve the consent items other than 5.2, 5.8, and 5.12. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Consent items 5.2, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you give me an overview again of how these lists are used?
These lists are, it's an on-call list as a master group for general engineering, surveying, and materials testing as we go throughout the year. If we're dealing with something that's more specialized or very unique in nature, we can either do a separate request for proposals for that work or we'll contact some of the agencies or consultants that deal in very specialized items. This is very general in nature. It's for our street and roadway projects that are very general, underground sewer, storm drain, and stuff of that nature. It's our standard that probably makes up 90% of our CIP, the work that we do, will come off of this list.
So, how do you, how do you use this list?
How do we use it? The project managers have a list and they can go through here and identify which consultant offer here is it best to fit a certain project that we may be doing. I keep track as a capital projects manager, an idea who we've used such that there's not a consistent, we only use one firm. And if you look back, we've used every firm over the last year and it'll be as projects come up, a project manager go, you know what? This group looks really perfect for this. We haven't used them. So, that's how we use the list.
And the reason why I ask is it's rare that I get two phone calls on the same item. This week I received two phone calls from firms on this list that really asked me the question, why do they do this? Because they've been on the list before and they've never received any work out of it. But yet they see one company or two companies receive all the work on out of it. About seven years ago, we had the same thing and when staff, when finance produced results for it, we really had one firm that was receiving an awful lot of the city's works. And that's when you came back and say, well, this is specialized and so they were able to do that. So, do you rotate it? Do you, I mean, it still appears to me that it's very subjective that a project manager can say, oh yeah, I like item number, I like contractor number five, so I get to use him because he does this type of work when the other nine contractors could do the same type of work, but because they have a special relationship, they can, he could go to five and there's no checks and balances on who's bidding and who's not.
Our checks and balances are through Dan Marin and our purchasing. He does keep an eye on it as well as I do. That's part of my job is to ensure that we are rotating through the list. I'd be more than happy to develop of last year's what we spent on consultants and who with. I do try and ensure that it goes across the board. We do give the project managers latitude to work off a list that there is 10 in a design. I believe we have six total and seven in surveying and five in materials testing. These match up with what we have as a CIP. I can't have a list bigger than that. I'd love to have all 25, but I can't.
You know, I understand. You went through the selection process to that, but it still becomes a subjective nature that there is somebody on out there that says that I, I've got 10 people there I can choose from. I get to pick who I want to, whether they pick the same person or not all the time. There, you know, and I appreciate the offer for last year's list because that's what I'm going to ask for is last year. In fact, I would really like to have the last three years to see if we really true have the checks and balances in place because if I receive two phone calls from, you know, at best, that looks like it's 20% of the largest list. It could be as much as 33% of the smallest list of people that are on the... You know, and I appreciate the offer for last year's list, because that's what I'm going to ask for, is last year. In fact, I would really like to have the last three years.
Okay.
To see if we really true have the checks and balances in place. Because if I receive two phone calls from, you know, at best, that looks like it's 20% of the largest list. It could be as much as 33% of the smallest list, of people that are on this list saying, I'm not sure I want to do this anymore, because I never get a phone call. I never get any work out of this thing. And it's cost me time and money to process this all the time. So, you know, since we are a subjective process here, it's not absolute. I was told that you started at the top and you went down through the list and you picked the next contractor on the list. So that way there, you could always have projects rolling throughout the community. But that doesn't sound like that's the case.
No, sir. And I'll be honest, on a list of 10 here, it's very general in nature. But as projects come up, some of these 10 are better suited for some of the stuff, even though it's general, than others would be. So we do give some latitude to a project manager to fit out of that 10, what is a good fit for the project we're doing, so that we have savings on the project. You're trying to ensure that we're spending the money properly and we're spending it, you know, in a manner that doesn't cost us more money trying to bring somebody up to speed with something that fits them more perfectly.
And I understand your situation. You have to please understand mine is if there's complaints coming out of the community of why do we do this? Because they never get on the list, I mean, they're on the list, but they never get any work out of it. Is that a legitimate concern that a company in this community should have?
I don't believe so. We're going to pull the last three numbers. I will get those to you for and report back to council so that we can show you that. But I feel very confident that we've covered everybody on our list in the last year for definite.
Okay. You know, maybe it would be wise for you to meet with Mr. Schmidt and find out who these two are?
Absolutely. I'd be more than happy to.
So you can check it against the list to see if they are not getting any bids at all, and if there's some specific reason for it?
And this is consulting work. So absolutely, I'd be more than happy to. This is professional services.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. All right, anything else on 5.2? Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Ratty. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. 5.8, Mr. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions for Chief Locke.
Chief Locke.
Chief, if you could just, I just had a call from one of my constituents about a general item, and they wondered if this is the same thing that Reno and Washington County are having problems trying to get together on. And I said, I think it's almost similar, but I'd let the chief kind of explain it. And then the other question was, didn't we already have a cooperative agreement with Truckee Metals Fire Protection? And did it expire, or what happened?
To answer your first question, there are ongoing negotiations between the City of Reno and Truckee Metals Fire Protection District, which now incorporates your fire protection district. As to the outcome of that, I don't know where they're at in that process. As far as our agreement with Truckee Metals Fire Protection District, we do have an old agreement. It is time for an update. In light of the recent dissolution, if you will, between the two agencies, we are seeking to update our contracts with Truckee Metals Fire Protection District, with the City of Reno, as well as our regional hazardous materials agreement.
Okay. And this is a good deal for the City of Sparks?
That's correct. We've gone through our records management system. We've looked at the incidents since Station 5 was opened in 2005. The agreement seems to be fair and equitable. If anything, we're giving up a little bit more than we're getting. If you look at the package in front of you, you will see the annual operating plan. There are some map sections in there. They're identified. There are a number of county pockets within the City of Sparks. It would be prudent for us to respond to those. There are a number of fringe areas between the City of Reno and the county where both agencies receive benefits. We respond into the county, and the county responds into the City of Sparks.
Okay. I think it looks good myself. And I looked at the maps, and I thought it made a lot of sense. So thank you for doing it.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Move by Councilman Kerrigan, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve 5.8. Any further discussion? Let's try the voting machine again. Seeing none, please vote. Yikes. Passed unanimously. Okay, moving on to 5.12, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is not so much that I have an issue with the item, I have an issue with it being on consent item, because I think that's, there needs to be some discussion on the council of what this actually means. And maybe you just give a presentation first on the item, and then we can talk about timetables, commitments, all the things that I think are intended consequences. They're not actually unintended, but they're intended. We need to, we need to talk about that.
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Andy Hummel, utility manager for the city. Item 5.12, we are requesting approval of a contract with Warren and Schiffmacher to do appraisal work for the North Truckee Drain Project. This is a longstanding project we've been working on. The appraisals necessary to begin right-of-way acquisition for that project, as far as timeframe, we're anticipating it's going to be approximately six months, about 180 days to get the appraisals in. They believe that they can get some of the earliest ones to us within about 90 days, but from past experience, about six months is about what this process takes. As far as selection, we do not have a right-of-way list of firms that provide this type of work. The Regional Transportation Commission does. Warren Schiffmacher was picked as the next one on that list. That's how we selected them. Our property agent consultant, Dave Ville, also assisted in preparing the scope of work as well as reviewing the proposal. So as it mentions in the staff item, we have 18 separate properties. We have 13 unique owners down there. Some are owned to, in some cases, three parcels. So a lot of different people to deal with and unique properties. We anticipate from the areas we have laid out, it'll be all just property, no buildings will be affected. There will be permanent easements as well as construction.
So the timeframe is six months to do the, to actually do the appraisals?
Yes.
Then it's my understanding the appraisals are good for 12 months.
Yes.
So in 18 months, roughly October of next year, our investment of $75,000 is, with it, acted upon it, we've got all the easements, and we've negotiated, and we've closed the deals with all the owners? Or we have to go back and redo the appraisals, update all the appraisals, spend more money to get that done in 18 months from today?
If we get into a situation with a, you know, a property owner that takes a long negotiation, something like that, there may need to be an updated appraisal, yes.
And my question and discussion for the council is that doing this now, which I agree upon, I agree to do it, I agree, I think it's a good thing to move forward with. We need to make some commitments to ourselves here when it comes to the flood project on where we're going to be at, with the flood project. We're going to do all this work. Are we going to commit to the Truckee Drain with or without the flood project approval, with or without FEMA's approval, or whoever has to prove it? I'm not saying that without their blessing with it, but the entire flood project, are we going to make a commitment? Are we making a commitment by this action that we're going to move forward with this stuff? We're not going to sit around and wait? I think we are. And I don't want to spend $75,000 today if we don't have commitments to get this thing done.
I think we committed a long time ago when we spent $4 million for design. So we're committed to do this. We're, we're going to do this as quickly and with or without the flood project.
If I, Mike? Please. For the record, Deputy City Manager for Community Services. One component of the conversation that we need to have does go back to the JPA that we have with the Flood Management Authority. And as written, that contemplates that the city will get the project ready to bid. So that means completely designed, all the property acquired, get everything ready to go, and then hand it over to the Flood Management Authority for them to construct. That's what's in the JPA today. So that is certainly a key component of this conversation. You put that together with the new five-year timeline that the Flood Management Authority Board signed off on at their workshop, that puts them, their ability to, you know, to have fees in place and use that money for flood damage reduction-type projects out starting in that first quarter of 2016. So that's, you know, three, three and a half years, almost four years down the road. So I think that needs to be a consideration for this council as well. I know that, you know, we've been, we're in the fourth year of collecting our own river protection rate fee in the City of Sparks. And, you know, we are looking to put those funds to good use. So we are facing a question, as Councilmember Schmidt has pointed out here, is this something that we want to move forward with on our own? And get the improvements in the ground for the benefit of not only the citizens of Sparks, but the citizens of the unincorporated county and the citizens of Reno as well? Because that North Truckee Drain Project, if you'll recall, reduces the flood pool depth by seven or eight tenths of a foot. So that applies not only to Sparks, but across, you know, over to Rosewood Lakes and back to the west. So it is truly a regional project. So we've, as a council and as a matter of policy, you're being asked to consider the timing of these improvements. And do you want to take an initial step on your own? Or do you want to look to the Flood Management Authority? Comply with the JPA, get it ready to go and hand it to them, and let them do it? And this, certainly this $75,000 expenditure is a timely one to draw the necessity of timing to the forefront. Where, you know, yes, we can spend the $75,000, but it's got a limited shelf life before it goes bad and would have to be redone. So I think that those are some additional things that the council should consider, as you're talking about how to proceed. Because really, at the end of the day, that's the question. How do you want to proceed?
I'll be more than happy to tell you what I would like to have a timeline on, is that we do this contract immediately, encourage the appraisals to be back as soon as possible, enter negotiations with all 13 property owners as fast as possible, get this right-of-way under control by the end of this year, end of 2012, and then by the spring of next year, have this project under construction. That would be, because I think this, you know, we made a commitment five years ago. The citizens of this community have been paying a tax, a fee for this project for five years now. And they deserve to see us take the action to make this thing happen. And so, you know, I'm not in 18 months, I'm in favor of getting this thing done. In 18 months, we're under construction and moving along with this thing. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Neil.
Mr. Schmidt, and then Mr. Kerrigan.
Well, you know, we talked about this earlier. I'm concerned about the appraisals. I want to make sure that the appraisals are accurate. But this, these appraisals differ from appraisals we've had in the past on buildings and stuff. We're appraising right-of-way and access to where we're going to build it, right? That's what the appraisal is.
That's what we're doing, yes.
And I agree with Mr. Schmidt. One thing, the funds for the North Truckee Drain were always intended to turn over to the flood project and have them pay for the project. That's not going to happen for a while. We won't even be able to spend funds that they have until 2016. So I'm all in favor of getting this going, and Sparks does that work. We're the only ones being aggressive on this, and we need to continue, provide the flood protection we can for this community.
Mr. Kerrigan.
I think both Ron's hit on, you know, we did, we committed five years ago when we decided to split up our sewer fees and go sewer, drainage, and I think flood control was the other one.
River protection, yes, sir.
So I think that commitment was made five years ago. I think also in the JPA, doesn't it say something about if we turn over a project to the flood control and it's not done in a certain amount of time, it comes back to us? Doesn't it say that in there?
Yes, sir, it does. And that is linked to the completion of the judicial review process.
Right.
Which is two of the three years that are in that schedule. So that clock, that they have a 365-day clock that starts once that judicial review process is complete. Under the current schedule, as proposed, that means that clock would start ticking in, say, March of 2016. And they would have a year to get something on the street.
Okay. Yeah, we can't wait that long. I think just everybody that's been watching the flood control committee going at it, it's, I think the problem is that they have a hard time deciding how they're going to do the fees. We're already in place in Sparks, and I'm with both Ron's and saying, let's go. And it's like you said, Neil, didn't you say that it's going to lower by what, almost a foot?
Seven or eight tenths of a foot, nearly a foot. Yes, sir.
Nearly a foot, all over the area. So it's not just for the benefit of the City of Sparks.
Yes, right.
But we're going to end up paying for it. And so, once again, I think it behooves us to get going with it. So I'm wholeheartedly in favor of doing this and getting the design. We already have the design done, and then, once we get the property, let's get going.
Okay.
Other than right-of-way acquisition, if we wanted to start tomorrow, what would we need? What else do we need?
Andy, can you run through that list?
We are finalizing the permitting. We have a...
We're with Corps of Engineers?
Yeah, Corps of Engineers. I'm sure you remember our experiences on some past river projects. This one is substantially simpler. We're getting what is called a letter of permission, much easier process. We do have a small amount of wetlands that we're impacting along the existing drain. We have a mitigation project for that that's in next year's CIP. That has to occur either concurrently or before the actual relocation work. We also have some permitting with the State of Nevada that is underway. And then we determine what mechanism we would use to actually fund the project through bonding, I would anticipate, off of our revenues.
What about an EIS?
Has not been, a full-blown EIS has not been required for this.
So we need that to do something?
Uh, no.
No, sir.
No.
We do not. If we do it on our own...
No, just, we need this letter of permission.
We don't need an EIS, we need a letter of...
A letter of permission, yes. Yep. We have done...
All right, so we're closer than I thought we were.
Yes.
But when you're working with the Corps of Engineers, are you really ever close?
Yeah.
We're more important.
Yep.
Mr. Schmidt, and then down the line.
Interstate 80, can we go under there, or do we have to, we have to tear it up?
We are okay under Interstate 80. We did some preliminary work a year and a half, two years ago on the Sparks Boulevard off-ramp.
Yeah, but it just went up to the edge of the freeway, didn't go under the freeway.
Yes, exactly. We have two existing zones under the freeway, one where the current North Truckee Drain goes through, and then we have a second one further to the west. When we did that work under Sparks Boulevard, we put bigger culverts in there, so we could actually use the full capacity that's under the freeway. Between those two, we don't need to do any improvements through the freeway.
Oh, that's good. A lot cheaper.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
I just want to get on the record and say that we need to get this moving also. So it's, makes perfect sense to me to move forward. And it's kind of an all-or-nothing deal, because you can only, if you miss one segment, you haven't accomplished what you need to do. So we need to get it all done, and not just four fifths of it. So, yeah, I'm, let's move forward, get going.
Ms. Ratty.
Well, we've got to add to the kumbaya chorus, of course, of, let's have a flood project. I do think one of the questions we're going to have to answer is if we're going to be able to bond off of fees that are pledged to a JPA that's doing something else. So obviously, there are a number of questions that we need to answer, and we're not agendized to do that today. But so how do you see, or will you come to us at another time with what that would look like?
Yes, ma'am. We will come back with a more complete picture and schedule. But did want to have a focused conversation today as you were considering making this $75,000 expenditure and certainly knowing that it has a limited shelf life. It's not like the design that you can do and put on the shelf and wait for a while. You know, appraisals, they dry up.
So, I mean, that would be my thesis. I think, I'm on board, but I, I'm on board and how are we going to pay for it? We clearly don't have the money in the bank. We don't have the space to reserve to impact our general fund and we need to make sure we can bond against those.
And certainly, what we do have is a seasoned revenue stream.
Seasoned revenue stream.
To go to the market with. If that's in case, how we want to proceed.
But a seasoned revenue stream that on paper is committed to a JPA...
That is also intended to pay for this as part of a larger project for the whole Truckee Meadows.
I hope it's that simple.
And of course, it won't be.
Yeah.
One more. I just... We've got one down here, Mr. Schmidt.
Good.
Then you're next.
I go ahead and concede to Mr. Lawson. I was just going to, you know, thank the council and staff and the mayor for the discussion is exactly what I wanted to have so we all knew what this meant. And so, thank you and concede to Mr. Lawson and make a motion if he wants.
I just want to back up a little bit and just ask, Neil, because this is such a political football and the flood protection and all, that we put it on our regular agenda and not go through consent from here on? Just so it's, we get this open conversation so everyone knows where we're going.
So, if I understand correctly, anything relating to the North Truckee Drain you want to see on general business?
Yes. That way, it's open and it's...
Very easy to comply with.
It doesn't look like it's being slid through.
Very easy to comply with.
Yes, that's it. I mean, I think it's a great discussion and thanks for pulling that out, Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Kerrigan.
Our flood fees are, how much do we generate a year about?
We're, I just looked at this, about three to four million.
Okay, so, we can go to 30 to 40 million, right? If we bond?
Yeah.
And what is the last estimate for the North?
Forty-eight to 50 million dollars.
So, we're almost there? Okay.
You know what's ironic about this? I think it was at the University of Nevada, we had a retreat two years ago, three years ago, and we threatened to go out on our own, which we probably should have done. By now, we'd have this thing done.
It's cheaper now, though.
But because the, it's a consent, the voting is a consensus voting, we got voted down. So, I'm glad we're having this discussion and getting it out in the open and we're proceeding forward because it's been way too long. So...
Can I just clarify one thing that Mr. Ratty said? The funds are not committed to the flood project.
The way the JPA is structured, is written, is that as soon as the flood fees come on board...
Right.
We will rescind our river protection rate.
Right.
All the flood fees.
All of them.
For all entities.
Yes, yeah. Once the FMA establishes a fee that applies community-wide, if you will...
Right. And then, we would turn over what we have.
We'll turn over what we have and we will stop collecting.
So, it's going to be two years before they start collecting fees, 16 before they can actually spend any of that money. We're going to have this thing built. What would be the construction period of year?
How long, Andy?
Uh, we'd be a couple of years.
Couple of years?
Yeah.
Four phases?
We could do it as many as four. We could do it in two. There's a couple of logical breakpoints in there.
Yeah.
Unless I got that wrong.
No, that is correct. We have numerous.
So, why would we stop between one phase and another phase? That's, I think that was Ed's question earlier.
And it might come down to, really, the funding.
Yeah.
If it comes down to, we'll take the money we have in the bank and the FMA has some money in the bank, we could put that together and make a nice project on its own and not have to go out to the market. There would be a good reason to maybe go halfway. Or for, at least for you to consider going halfway. And then, that would buy you time to put together funding to do the other half. So, that's when it's nice to have those, the options in phases. But certainly, understanding Councilman Lawson's point that we don't get any benefit from this project until the whole thing's done.
Yep.
Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you again for all, everyone in the conversation. I make a motion that we approve item 5.12 as outlined by staff.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve 512. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it. General business discussion and approval of a bill draft request for the 77th session of the Nevada Legislature. Mr. Mayberry.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, Mr. Schmidt. Adam Meacham, accumulation manager of the City of Sparks. For you is a matrix of bill draft request concepts, a majority of these back in May. Of special note, you'll also have been, in your board package, have the Sparks Charter Committee changes. I have the chairman of the Sparks Charter Committee, Bill Brainerd, here today if you have any questions from a committee perspective. But the direction that the staff was given to really attempt to identify those that are specific to the statewide matters and those are, that are specific to Sparks. We could select a BDR concept and give staff an opportunity to begin to prepare the necessary paperwork and application and that. This is an opportunity to discuss some of these concepts and hopefully, select one that we can move forward. The mayor and I have been in touch with the League of Cities through their legislative committee and we have, through the mayor's efforts, begun discussion on some of the top items we have, namely, the top A, B, C, and D, BDR concepts. There was certainly some positive discussion and I think some desire to begin to have some dialogue and possibly move some of these issues forward. But it is, it is still early. We have a good eight months before the next session opens. So, those are my comments. Be happy to take any questions.
Questions, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we know when the Nevada League of Cities has to have their list in?
Well, everybody has to have their BDRs in by September 1.
Do you have any idea when we would know if the league is picking up these other items for us? Did, I mean, I understand we're the only ones to submit any to the league, but when will they, when will they, when will they make a decision?
I guess my perspective on that would be, I don't want to presuppose when they're going to zero in, but I suspect probably in the next 45, 60 days is when I think they'll have a good sense of what they want to do. I know my counterparts at Washoe County and Reno will be having similar discussions we're having today, this week and the following week.
And our deadline is September the 1st?
To submit a BDR, that's my understanding. Everybody's deadline.
Everybody's deadline is September 1st.
We're having another meeting with legislative, NLC legislative in June, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Questions? Anyone else? Mr. Schmidt?
These are, most of these issues are statewide issues, so that's what we're talking about with the Nevada League, whether they're going to...
Yes, sir.
And then, we'll jump on board and support them or if not support them. There's only one Sparks issue in here and it has to do with the Charter Committee.
That's correct.
Okay.
Specific to Sparks.
Mm-hmm. And we had some other options in there too, I think, but we didn't list them. We talked about, well, they're all state issues. That's fine.
Mr. Kerrigan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Adam, I, you know, we've always tried to do a hands-off with our Charter Committee and I don't think we, you know, we've ever tried to strong-arm the doing one thing, one way or another. I think a couple of us have spoke in front of them on certain items. And so, I don't, I don't remember ever having the city council carry the Sparks Charter for it. I'd feel more comfortable if they could find one of our legislators to take it for it, to tell you the truth. And that way, we can really stay hands-off. But if the legislature, anybody in the legislature wants somebody to come down and testify for that bill, it could be somebody from the Charter Committee.
Sure, sure.
Rather than somebody from the city. Because I think that'd put the onus on Julia and the mayor to have to defend that.
Sure.
And I don't know if we want to do that or not. So, I'd feel comfortable not to do anything today and save our bill draft to see what the Nevada League of Cities is going to do. And if they don't carry something that we see is important, we still have till September to decide.
Yeah. I kind of agree with that ploy too. There's some things on there that are passionate to us and they may be passionate to the rest of, or most of the League of Cities, but some may not. So, there are some things that may be carried by them, but there's others that may not that then we can come back maybe and decide we want to do that later. Anyone else? So, are we okay with taking no action?
So, we'll, just for clarity on staff department, we'll go ahead.
Mr. Schmidt?
Can we, can we just, I think that we have some reluctance to do that because of past history of being told to be hands-off the Charter Committee. Can we say, you know, invite the Charter Committee to come back in 45 days if they can't find a sponsor to it? We don't want to let their stuff die. But if they can't find somebody to go and do it in the next 45, have them come back as a gen item to give us another shot so they have a chance to go ahead and do that. Maybe by that time, we'll have more from the state league where they're at. But by no means, I don't, I don't want their stuff to go down the tubes. If they can't find a legislator to take it on up, then, you know, I think we should, you know, address that issue. But I think we should let them continue the path that they've done in the past and let's find a legislator to go ahead and take up their, take up their issues.
Sure. As a matter of information, we, the city council back in 97 and 99, it appears to our research, did in fact carry the Charter Committee bill. So, it is something that has been, has been done in the past and we could certainly explore that.
Okay.
That would be for all of our time.
Yeah.
All right, I think you have your marching orders. Then you can let us know if the Charter Committee has a problem, bring it back and we can decide what we want to do.
So, just for clarity, we'll continue down this course and then you and I will talk with the league and the process of elimination, maybe bring something back that's of a high priority.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Adam. 6.2 Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action on a Policy Statement Defining Supported Funding Options to be Forwarded to the Washoe County Commission Related to the Washoe County Senior Services Department. Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager for the record for this item. There's been lots of discussions about different services at the regional level and as part of that conversation, there had been discussions on animal services and senior services came out of that discussion back in the spring. It was intended for us to have a detailed conversation at the June 4th joint meeting, but unfortunately, due to lack of quorum, we weren't able to have that discussion. There was an extensive staff report done by Mr. Tard Button, who is here to answer questions and/or provide comment today as well. This staff report was intended for you to have a public conversation on senior services as a product for which you'd provide financial support today to discuss the potential needs of senior services in the upcoming future, which are highlighted in the staff report that you received. And I did pull out a couple of the key points as part of the face of the staff report. Without going into the details of the report, what it really comes down to is the population base that will be consuming senior services is increasing at an exponential rate because of the baby boomers hitting the senior age classification. The types of services that are being consumed by the senior population base is changing. There are more services that they are consuming than traditionally in the past and we project that they'll be consuming more on top of that. There was a intent to have a funding discussion at that June 4th meeting and the reason for that was, in the staff report, it was very clear that the 1% ad valorem that had been put in place prior, that was intended to grow as our community was growing and that was hoping to keep up with the demand. Two things have happened, as you well know. We just talked about the population base is exploding and on the second side, the development curve has significantly gone downward and we've watched our ad valorem dollars decrease significantly rather than increase on an ongoing basis. So, the intent of the discussion today is to understand that in that staff, in the staff report that you have attached, there were two scenarios that were drawn. One was if we were to take the current funding that we have and add one more penny of ad valorem to it. And then, the second option would be to maintain the current funding and add a, add a two-penny increase in ad valorem. And what you saw was in both scenarios, situations to where we would be able to continue services that we might have to otherwise deplete. And in some instances, we'd be able to enhance. And clearly, the two-cent option provided more enhancement capability than the one-cent option. That just makes sense because of the funding cycle. The funding discussion itself, which is really in the analysis section of the staff report, as we know from our discussions in our SSSI project, the city is, has 94% of its revenue sources controlled by other factors, whether it be the county, the state, or others. So, you have some fairly limited options on what you would be able to do to either increase or change the funding equation that you have today. And so, I just want to go over kind of the five things that were in the staff report and then open it up for you to have a discussion amongst yourselves and obviously, we have some expertise that we can answer some questions. So, one of the options you have today is that you could just use the current property tax allotment as it is, adjust the services accordingly, which is what is happening.
What page does this start on so I can follow you? Do you remember where it is? Do you know?
It is on my staff report for 6.2 and it's in the, the analysis section on the, on the face of that staff report.
Just the Sparks staff report?
Just the Sparks staff report, 6.2.
I was looking on the Washoe County one.
No, no, there was...
I thought there was more numbers.
In the Washoe, in the Washoe County staff report originally for the joint meeting, the intent was to have the details that you received and it has been attached to this document as well. And then, the funding conversation was the second one, of which no staff report was ever produced on that. So, the five generic things that we can do is utilize the current allotment. We would manage our budget and balance our budget as we're doing today and decreases in ad valorem, then have decreases in services. The other, the next option, and again, these are theoretical options, the county, because they have access to ad valorem of their own, could just increase ad valorem dedicated to senior services. The city and the counties could work together and do the same thing. They could agree to increase whatever capacity they have because we're not at the actual tax cap of the shared ad valorem tax today.
Steve, can I stop you there? Didn't Reno just vote to raise their property taxes?
Yes.
They did. So, do they have any room left?
They might not.
I don't think so.
I think they do.
We would have, because in your budget, you did not raise anything, so your overlapping tax between...
I think they went right up to the, to the limit.
Yeah. So, they do not have any overlapping tax capacity. You do, so with what the county did...
It would be us in the county.
And what we, and we did not do anything, we would have some. So, again, that, in a city-county partnership option, asking Reno to participate now is not possible for them to do that. And so, then, that would fall into what would be the fourth item, where you start changing property tax allotments between the cities. Similar to what we did with animal services years ago and somewhat similar to what we've done with senior services now, is the city had decreased their ad valorem by a certain number and allowed the county to increase theirs. No tax effect to the citizen, but the purchasing power of a penny of assessed value from the county's perspective is, is over a million dollars, where from the city's perspective is about $250,000. So, significant difference in moving a penny from one ledger to another. And then, the final potential theoretical source of funding would be some other source, which could be sales tax-based, license, and fee-based within with what we can do today. The issue with the five that are in front of you, while they're all viable options, they all have restrictions, they all have practical maximums, as we just discussed, Reno would be out of one of the discussions. To do any one of these particular ones or any, any combination, some of these could be done by the council, such as if you wanted to dedicate, collect and dedicate a penny of ad valorem and send it to the county, you could do that. You could have done that during your budget process. That is an authority that you have. The county can likewise do similar as Reno was able to do that we just, as an example. To do other options may require a ballot question. And as you heard in public testimony today, some, some folks were suggesting that we have an advisory ballot to do additional taxation. Well, the ballot question alternative is up to the county. You could advise them through action that you take, that you would like them to consider it. They, as a separate elected body, could choose to do whatever they chose to do as, as a body, whether they would do it or not. And the options that are available, even through a ballot question, are somewhat limited. You can't go above the property tax cap if you're talking about ad valorem. You may not be able to do anything with sales tax without an approval of the legislature or the governor's office. So, while they are theoretical options to you for discussion purposes, depending on what you would land on, would then decide what restrictions you might have and to go from there. So, with that, I would encourage Mr. Mayor, a conversation amongst the elected body to[1740.32] see what their thoughts are on this process. And any questions of detail that you might have for Mr. Tard Button?
Questions? We have Mr. Lawson, Ms. Ratty, then Mr. Kerrigan, and then Mr. Schmidt.
So, on a ballot question, let's just say the people decide they want to tax themselves the two cents for the ad valorem tax, that, and that raises above the property tax cap. So it would have to go to the legislature anyways, correct? And they have to then agree to that increase.
If you had an advisory question, yes, and again, Steve Driscoll for the record, if there was an advisory question and ad valorem was the issue, and if whatever was being advised, suggested by the voting population, if they were to bump into a tax, to a cap, it would require the legislature to do something, whether it would be to extend the cap, provide an exemption, they would have to do it. The county commission, as the taxing agent, would not be able to violate that tax cap.
So my question to the follow-up question is, has the state legislature ever denied a region that ability in the past? If I say I want to be taxed, have they ever said, "Sorry, we're not going to tax you"?
Certainly. Certainly they've done that.
Steve Driscoll, for the record, in my 12 to 15 years of dealing with the legislature, there has not been any ability to go over the tax cap with two exceptions. One was an exception for when the state chose to move child social services to the counties to be responsible, they attached two pennies of ad valorem with that and allowed the previously stated tax cap of 364 to go to 366 for those counties for which they were dictating those social services. The second was in a situation in White Pine County, where White Pine County found themselves in a default situation. The state took over, overseeing and basically managing the county's fiscal operations for a period of time. And because of commitments that were made and contracts that had been signed, they were allowed, because of a failure, if you will, to clean up the fiscal mess and be over. And I don't remember, Jeff, maybe you'd be able to help on whether that was a limited period of time until it was solved. I don't know that it was an open-ended forever, but it was very specific to handle that fiscal crisis. So beyond that, they've not, to my knowledge, entertained any other tax cap increase.
So I think what we're talking about may be different in that this is a ground-up instead of a top-down type of situation, where the people are saying, "This is what we want," assuming they voted affirmative. I'm just having a hard time understanding that, why they wouldn't allow you to do what you wanted to do as a community.
Good.
Yeah, I think, I think part of the problem, too, is that some, some people have signed the No New Tax pledge, okay? And this is the fallacy I see in the No New Tax pledge. Even though I really am a big proponent of No New Taxes, this is the one that I would say, if I ever had to sign that, I'd put a caveat that said, "Unless your constituents say it's okay." Because we've run into that problem in the city of Sparks before, where the citizens said, "Go for it," okay? We did it with animal control, where everybody said, "Go ahead," and taxes. So that's where I think that, that No New Tax pledge should be kind of revamped. And so I think the governor, Ron and I were just talking, I think the governor vetoed something last time that came forward as a new tax that everybody voted for, and I don't remember what it was. Somebody voted to tax themselves, and he said, "No." And I can't remember what it is.
I agree with that. That, that did happen. And the other thing is, you know, if you're a great legislator and want to keep your, do your job, don't sign a No New Tax pledge, and you won't have to worry about it. Ms. Ratty? Are you done, Ed? I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Okay.
I'm still confused by government.
Well, get, get in line, pal.
So, first, just a simple question. I believe I know the answer to, but I just want to make sure. So since the June 4 meeting was canceled, we're the first body to take this up? Nobody else has acted or done anything with it?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
I believe it's on Reno's agenda next to discuss.
Okay. So I feel a little bit of responsibility for this, given that I was the person at the joint meeting who said that the senior services budget is too slim and we need to do something about it. I, I feel strongly, having from my time on the Senior Services Advisory Board, and I'm working for Human Services for most of my life, that the difference with this budget, all of the departments have sustained cuts, everybody, our city has sustained cuts, you know, there's no question that there's been a lot of cutting, and a lot of that cutting has been painful. I think where the distinction is here is that this budget was woefully underfunded for the current need when things were booming. And, and that is true across the board, but we're talking about a very small amount of money to serve a population that has a very high need, and some life or death circumstances, frankly. So I feel like the, the most obvious solution is a countywide solution, because our one little penny in the city of Sparks is not enough money to make any impact just by itself. So the action that we're able to take on our own is not sufficient to meet, anywhere, come anywhere near meeting the need or being able to do anything. So I would like to see some sort of resolution from this body that says we support the county moving forward in a countywide matter. And then, if the county is smart enough to do so and move forward on a two-cent, whether it goes, whether they act unilaterally or whether they decide to support putting it on the ballot, that we're prepared to then go down and say the cap needs to be raised. Because this is a population that, it's, it's one where we're being, I always get this backward, pound foolish, penny wise, pound foolish. You know, putting people in homes when they can be served at community services is tenfold, a hundredfold sometimes, more expensive. And just because it doesn't hit our budget, it does hit a government budget, and it does impact everybody's taxes. And we just continue to, you know, look at something like daycare that has been on the brink of being canceled for the last four budget cycles. Having that person go to a daycare is so much more cost-effective than having that person be put in a home because daycare doesn't exist. Having that person get some assistance with activities of daily living is so much more cost-effective than putting them in a home, and it just goes on and on. And when we cut the social workers, that affected the residents of Sparks, because now, when any one of us gets that call from that senior that really needs some help, there's a waiting list for the social worker who's trained and capable of connecting that family with the resources that they need. So I'm a huge advocate for this. I think we need to act, and I think we need to encourage the county to do what they can to make it a countywide solution.
Ms. Kerrigan, then Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, what about a tax override? Can we not, as a county, override that's 3.64 if we say it's a tax override? Can't we go to the ballot and say, "We want a two-cent tax override"?
Mr. Kerrigan, Steve Driscoll for the record, to give you just a touch of history. The Nevada Constitution has a $5 maximum in the Constitution on property tax. The legislature is the one who imposed the $3.64, and at the time, the understanding was that that was the maximum that could be accumulated through actions of elected local government bodies. So the property tax increases that, for the last several years, we've had the ability through the rules to raise up to six cents. We've not done so. Other organizations have done that. The legislature, however, had their own interpretation of the rule that it included all ad valorem, didn't matter the source, because originally, the 3.64 was about your decisions as an elected body, and voter overrides were intended to be outside the 3.64. They have been commingled, and the legislature has held, with those two exceptions that I mentioned earlier, that the 3.64 is the cap, period. And so it would take a, a political effort by local government to work with their legislators to soften that position that they have, and to maybe go back to the original intent of the law, was that overrides would be outside of the 3.64, never to exceed the constitutional cap, because that would take, obviously, much different action by the voting public and the legislators to do that. So I think there is room for discussion, but it would have to be discussion clearly at the political level and the policy level from that standpoint.
Okay, well, then, that probably will be a non-starter. So going on with the other, with the other issues, if we do a city-county combined, then that means the cities are going to get a double whammy, okay? In other words, we're going to tax a penny for the city and a penny for the county, so we're now paying twice as much. So I think that solution should not be looked at. Countywide, it's fine with me. If we can't find, if we can't go to the tax override, because we have a couple cents to play with, but that's not going to, like Julia said, it's not going to matter. Reno's maxed out. I, I proposed this at the last joint meeting, and I'll propose it again, even though I'm going to get another phone call, okay? And I'm, I'll suffer through it. You know, we could take a penny from animal control and move it over to senior services without affecting anything. And if, if that's what we need to do, then we need to do that. Because I agree with Julia, and everybody else has said it, we do need to take care of the seniors. So that one right there is a no-brainer, as far as I'm concerned, and I know that Katie got upset at the county because they want the whole entire three cents to go to animal control. But getting, I think they have $6 million, and, once again, I think they have $6 million in the bank. I don't look at their budget, but that's a lot of money in the bank. Any way you look at it, I'm willing to, I'm willing to tell them to take a penny out of animal control for seniors, because if I have to make a choice between dogs and cats and seniors, I'm going to take seniors.
Mr. Mayor, if I might respond, again, Steve Driscoll for the record, since the original conversation with animal control and the potential of moving monies back and forth, the management of animal control has changed. The analysis and the details of what's needed has changed, and it was determined, the last discussion that I saw that was presented, did show that even under the current three-cent structure, that animal control would be potentially in a deficit situation as early as 2015.
Well, bring back the person that, that had the other analysis, because I like that one better. How's that sound? I mean, it appears, it appears if you're going to find somebody and if somebody new says, "Oh, wait a minute, we need to," of course they're going to say that.
I certainly would not be able to defend, defend the analysis. I'm just reporting the news to you. But I did want, and that has been part of the manager, you know, the county manager's discussion, was that as they've looked into things and determined what they could and couldn't do upon further research, it was determined that while if you did anything currently, it would be certainly short-term, and if it was a permanence shift, it would only exacerbate a problem that's going to come up now, based on looking at a multiple year solution. So the, kind of the idea of moving from one to the other, that originally seemed like it was a no-brainer, doesn't seem to have that same anymore. But clearly, if it was the pleasure of your council to ask on behalf of your voters to vote for something, and if it was to move money permanently, that would fall in with what your discussion is on the voters' will.
Okay, I want to get the penny straight. So they used three cents that we voted in for animal control, and only one cent for seniors?
Yes.
Is that correct? Anybody see a problem with that? I'm just asking. Does anybody have a problem with that? Because you're telling me that we're, it's going to cost, we, we have a cent for seniors and three cents for dogs and cats, and whatever else.
It is what it is. That's what we voted on.
Well, I understand that.
It's not right.
Well, then, that's, that's what I'm saying. So, and I don't think, I, I mean, personally, I would have no problem with going two cents and two cents. And I'll take the heat from animal control people all day long.
Ardena?
Yes. That's the phone call.
That is my, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, I'd like to go ahead and back up so I get a better understanding of exactly what, what the big picture is here. I think we all can relate to the value of a penny in property and ad valorem tax, to a penny in ad valorem tax. Was there any general fund money that the county was using outside of this penny to go ahead and fund senior services?
I would not be able to answer that.
Maybe Grady needs to answer that question.
Grady to come forward.
Thanks for waiting patiently, Grady.
Good afternoon.
He's been dying to get up here. I've been watching him. He's going to jump up here in a conversation, so I...
For the record, Grady Tardt, Director of Washoe County Senior Services. The county has, and in this coming fiscal year, is putting in county general fund to support senior services. They had an option, and were considering removing some of that, that supports Daybreak, Adult Day Health, and they put money back into this budget for this next coming, the coming fiscal year. Those funds have been in place since 1998.
And, let's say, four years ago, how much were those funds?
About $330,000.
And today, they are?
$230,000.
So they've cut their general fund down, you know, in the last few years.
They have.
So they, they made a conscious decision on their own to cut down the amount of money that's going to support this program, much less the unconscious decision, but the, the process that no one has control over property values. So you had a double whammy here.
That's true. There's, yes. We've, our funding has changed significantly over the past five years.
And, you know, if you, you want to find out why things happen, go look at the whole picture of why things happen, and you get a, you get a much clearer story, that there's short funds here due to economic conditions, and there's those short funds due to people made those decisions to cut those funds on down. And what bothers me, and I'm going to get back to the, to the animal controls, is six months ago, this council was presented with a, with a proposition that, you know, there was this $5.5 million excess funds, and in order to keep some of this cuts from happening on the general fund on items such as senior services, they were going to transfer this money out of the animal control and over to the general fund to be able to pay for some of this stuff. And there were some legal questions of whether that could be done at all without, you know, some, some talking about it. And, you know, through that whole process, what came out of it was, is that, you know, we're screwed up, we don't have $5.5 million, we've got to go spend that money now on other things, and it really irritates me, really irritates me, that somebody puts out a report saying, "We have $5.5 million in surplus," and goes to change management and said, "No, we don't have that money anymore. Come 2015, we're going to, we're going to be broke." That's bad management, and I'll put it on the table. And I'm sorry if the county doesn't like it, but you can't do that. You can't do that. And I, the county has an opportunity here with excess funds in one account and, and, you know, service levels drastically low on another account, to make those interdepartment transfers and go ahead and balance their budget. I'm saying, if they're going to be broke in 2015, then let's start today fixing the problems we have, and then hopefully, the economy's going to come back in better in 2015 to address some of this other stuff. We don't need to go to the people. If we go to the people, I'm going to, I'm going to support a transfer from one to the other. I'm not going to support asking to raise the cap, property tax cap, because, you know, we've got to fight with sister cities and everything else to make that happen. If we're going to solve this issue, we can solve it next week. I'm not saying solve the issue. If we want to go ahead and make progress on the issue, we can do that next week. Now, I don't want to sit here and tell the county what to do, because I don't want anybody coming into our house and telling us what to do. But based upon all the information that I've seen, based upon the documents that came out of the county six months ago, we were led to believe that this fund was flush, and they could transfer this money around to help solve their financial issues. And suddenly, with transferring all this responsibility to another high-end, high-cost department, that money's all going to disappear, and I, I think we're, we're sending a very bad message to the community. And so I would support, we ask the voters for a transfer, or just ask the county to do the transfer, and let's move on. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Ratty?
Well, first of all, and maybe we need some clarification on this, but my understanding is, in addition to new management and maybe a new assessment of the financial picture, they also got a legal opinion from legal, their own legal staff, that they couldn't. It was a vote of the people that said three, three cents were going to go to animals, and they don't have the legal ability to just change that. If they do, then they'll never be able, because I know it's said from one to three, I know it was a range, but if they come off of that three, that they may never be able to go back. So that's, that's my understanding, is that there was a legal opinion. And then I do have another comment.
Cheryl, if I may, that, that's a correct analysis. Our office, with the city of Reno's office, contacted the district attorney's office, and then the DA's office, did give them an opinion, saying you can't, the funds are allocated, you cannot move the funds out of animal control. And then on top of that, the plan they had devised for moving the taxes that were being collected, there became a very serious question as if, if and when the county did that, if they could ever go back and reinstitute that tax. And I believe the opinion out of the DA's office is you could not without another vote of the people. So it's, there is, as Mr. Driscoll stated, there is money sitting there, and there is tax capability, but moving it and reallocating it has been determined by a vote of the people, and it's, you cannot move it, contrary to what the county was originally suggesting.
If I could just ask a question, to make sure I understand. And I understand that if you reduce it, you can't go back. If they reduce it to two cents, leaving one cent on the table, they have the authority, not under that, that, that bill, or that, the tax question, but under their authority as a county, to issue a one-cent tax. They can, they can sit as, they can sit as a, as a county commission and say, "We now have one cent available. We could either give it back to the people, or we can go ahead and use that money for services inside, inside the county."
The way the joint power agreement was written is they have the ability to tax up to a certain amount. The county's argument was that we have the ability to tax up to a certain amount, we're going to lower that amount.
Right.
We have two different subjects going on. You have the joint power agreement, which dictates or attempts to allocate responsibility and money flow, and then you have the NRS. So, we have two different things we're trying to, to make function here. So, yes, the county could lower it, but then there is also the argument that they then be violating the JPA, the joint power agreement with, when we handed everything over to Washoe County. So, there's two different analyses that need to be performed, and I'm not, at this point, comfortable with telling you, yes, they can, or no, they can't, because you have to analyze both the contract between us, the city, Reno, and Washoe County, and the NRS. So, there, that's the problem right now.
Then maybe just make my borrowing no discount, no other tax thing, can, if there was a question on the county commission's agenda next week to raise one cent property tax for senior services, can they do that?
I don't know what they're, I don't know if they're at their limit. I don't know if they have other tax room available. I, I don't know.
Get rid of the limits. Get rid of everything. Do they have the authority to, it does, I mean, let's take all that material stuff. Can they sit at their county commission meeting next week and say, we give, we want to raise taxes one cent for property tax?
I'm not qualified to answer that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll for the record. In the, in the budget discussions, the county did mention, and they did put on the record, that based on the rules of adblocker and increases, they do, they do have a certain amount of authority, which is more than a penny. However, that authority would be subject to any overlapping tax rate. So, if with what, if Reno had maxed out, and therefore causing the overlapping tax rate for Reno and the county to be at 366 max, even though the county's elected board may have authorities, they would not be able to act based on the current rules of the legislature. If it was just Sparks and the county in, in the discussion, there would be taxing cap availability, but unfortunately, they have, you know, the county has to overlap with both Reno and with Sparks. You can't do either or. So, yes, the answer to your question would be, there is authority available. It is unfortunately subject to a cap, and if Reno has done, in fact, what we have discussed here, the cap may not be available, there may not be a full penny available to the commissioners to enact.
So, sir, a question here, repeated today, is asking Reno to...
I think, we got out of order here. I think Ms. Ratty still has the floor, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, let's get back to Ms. Ratty, and then we'll go to, Mr. Carrigan, you have a question again? And then we'll go to Mr. Schmidt again.
Thank you. All, all I wanted to conclude with is that, I'll, I'll take the calls too. They might be nicer. I like seniors, and I like cats and dogs. I'll wear buttons for both.
You're so diplomatic.
Thank you. And I think that when people see the impact of what a penny on their property tax means, particularly with their decreased property values, here's the upside. It's really not very much money, and we can take care of both our animals and our seniors. I think it's a false argument to pit little puppies and kittens against seniors and their most compelling needs, because they're both important. And we, we recognize that animals needed that money many years ago, when the people voted said, let's give them three cents. And so, why reduce the services available for the animal population to meet the needs of seniors when we're not, we're not there yet? So, I, I love kitties and puppies and seniors, and I think we need to do, do best we can by all of them.
You know, I, I'm not a big advocate of raising property tax, but if it's going to be raised, this is the environment that it will be less, less of a burden than it would ever be in a long, long time with the assessed valuations the way they are. A penny now is not going to hurt near as much as it was, did five years ago. Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, the problem we have is what Steve just laid out. If Reno didn't raise their property tax to the max, the county could go and say, okay, we're going to go two cents, because remember, we've always argued about this on this city council. If we don't do it, the county can do it. And that's absolutely true, because then we'll hit the cap. But since Reno already hit the cap, then they're going to have to go for an over, we're going to have to go for an override. That is not, we, Steve has already said the legislature doesn't look at it that way. So, if we did go to a vote of the people for a tax override, we're going to have to go down to the legislature and clear it. I think that the easiest way to do this, and Cheryl brought it up, it's legally, is to go to the citizens with a binding question, not just an advisory question, and say, can we move a penny from animal control that you already okayed to senior services? And that will go two cents and two cents. And I like cats and dogs too, but they don't know how to use the phone yet. So, that's, that's, that's where I'm at.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, Mr. Lawson?
I just want to make, on the record, I do love cats and dogs and seniors too, so there's no, I will wear both buttons also.
I think what, from serving on the advisory committee at senior services, I think what I'd like to see is, is if this council would just say, we are in support of a two-cent property tax to senior services. How we get there from here is something we can decide down the line, but the county does have to put it on the ballot. And it's an advisory question. It's not something that's going to be solved in a hurry, but it's the first step that I am afraid if we don't address it now, five years down the line, 10 years down the line, it's going to cost us a whole lot more money. And when we don't, you know, the other thing is, we're keeping seniors in their houses, and they're paying property taxes. So, if we don't have them in their houses, and they're not paying property taxes, they're a total drain. So, it, we need, I mean, from the business side of it, and I like dogs not as much as, well, I like, yeah, I like seniors. I don't like cats so much. But the bottom line is, I think it's something we have to address now. And I'm just saying that we support a ballot question is, is what I'd like to see out, come out of this council. And if we need to make a motion to that effect, I'll be happy to do so.
Julia's first, and then Mike.
And spoken much more eloquently, thank you, Councilman Lawson. My big concern about moving the penny from animal services to seniors, regardless of the impact on the animals, it's not enough to meet the needs of seniors. Two cents is what we need to meet the needs of seniors. And I frankly don't think that two cents is probably going to be enough over the long haul, but it's a good start in the right direction. So, that, that really is my, my significant concern with just moving the penny, is it's, it's not enough to do the work that needs to be done.
Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah. Look, I have no problem with, with going to the voters and asking for two cents, but let's get something realistic. In other words, if we vote, if they voted in and the legislature says no, then we're in no better shape than we are now. What I'm saying is, if, if you want to go for the kill, let's go for a penny kill that we might be able to get done, okay? And worry about that other penny later, if that makes any sense. In other words, I, I think it'd be easier, because, in other words, if you tell somebody, hey, look, your property tax isn't going to go up, we're not going to go over the cap, we're just moving it from point A to point B, and that'll give two cents and two cents. And if you can't run animal control on the same amount of money to run senior services, tough. Okay? I'm sorry, tough. But, I mean, if you want to say, we'll support a two cent, I, I have no problem with going to the public and asking them to raise their taxes, not want, I have no problem with that at all. I just don't think realistically, we're going to get, I mean, the public may say yes, but I don't know how the legislature's going to handle that. That's my only concern.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll address it just a little bit way, different way than, than Mike. I have no problem going with a two cents ballot measure, but I don't know if anybody's paying attention to politics right now and what's happening across the country. You're putting your eggs in some baskets that, you know, are pretty weak right now. I mean, you can sit there and say, yeah, we, we think that there's, you know, all the support out there, and we're going to do that. And come November the 6th, at nine o'clock at night, you may see something that's not very good. And you're no better off than you are right here today. In fact, you're probably going to be worse off, because once something gets a ballot and gets denied, or second stage, it gets passed, and then it gets turned down in the state legislature, we're still grappling with the same situation. I see solutions that are available for us to go ahead and enact on, get something solid, get something started, and then prepare time to, to put together a decent campaign or something that's going to make this thing work. This city council's had numerous, more than our share of items that we've put out there in front of the, the public and have gotten shot down, and it's not a great situation. We weren't able to solve our problems the day after the election any better than we were the day before. So, I'm looking for something concrete that we can do and do right away.
Okay, let's wrap this up. I think, let's try a motion here. Mr. Lawson, you had a motion. You want to give it a try, see what happens, and we can move on.
Yes, I make a motion that the Spark City Council supports a ballot initiative to raise the property tax by two cents to be dedicated to senior services.
We have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty. Any further discussion? Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, there's one word in there that I didn't really, I, I, I can't support it with that. If you say that we support a two cent, I would say, let's go to the public and ask them if they want to do that. Does that make sense? I mean, there's, there's a big distinction between what you said and what I'm thinking. Your motion was that we support, right?
Yes.
His question is, will you change it to ask?
In other words...
Absolutely. Okay, I see what you're saying.
You see what I'm saying?
Yep.
Later on, we can decide if we're going to...
Change the word support to ask.
He doesn't want anybody yelling at him for supporting a tax increase.
Thank you.
We support, we support asking. How's that?
Yes. Right. Because, no, and to me, to me, that's a big difference as a legislator, because that, that means that the public's going to tell me what to do, and that's all I'm asking. If the public says that, go ahead and vote for it, then I'll vote for it. If they say don't vote for it, then I won't vote.
You're correct, and, and that's what I meant to say.
Okay.
So, we, I, that we want to support asking.
Okay, before we take the vote, I've been remiss here. Grady, did you have anything else? I'm so sorry. I just...
No, I don't. I do want to thank the council for hearing this item. First of all, I put a lot of work into the report, but it, for the community, it really is a challenge. This is a decade when the baby boomers turn 65, and we, we need to be aware of it, and we need to discuss the priorities. So, I thank you for your attention to this matter.
We need to pay attention to this. I'm, I'm there, okay? So, I may need some help here. That's why I don't get to vote.
Yeah, we want, we want to keep the mayor, me, and Ron in our houses, so...
Exactly.
All right, everyone, understand the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Ron.
If I can, just ask, do you want to include anything in the mo, in the motion encouraging our sister governments to also do what's necessary to come up with that two cents and not go for the, the override?
How does Reno come up with it?
Reno, it doesn't have it, so...
Or at least make the motion that if we want unanimous with all three agencies involved.
Well, you said it earlier, Ron, and I, and I want to keep that in that frame, is that I don't want to tell Washoe County what to do. I just want to tell them what we'd like to see, and leave it at that.
So, I don't want to see this thing on the ballot with just Reno, or just Sparks and Washoe County.
Absolutely not.
I, I don't want to see that. And that's why I'm saying it, you know, that two cents countywide.
We're encouraging a countywide. My understanding of my...
No, I heard that. I heard it.
It's countywide.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry. I did not hear. So, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more further discussion, please vote. Almost forgot what we came here for. Fascinatingly, okay. Thanks, folks. Grady, thank you so much for coming. I'm sorry I ignored you. Thanks for being here.
Is that a bark?
That was just for you guys.
Okay, 6.3, consideration of possible approval to purchase various commercial insurance policies to protect the financial interests of the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. And I think you're going to do these together, Dan. Consideration of possible, 6.4, approval to purchase various commercial insurance policies to protect financial interests of the city of Sparks. Go ahead and cover 6.3 and 6.4.
Thank you very much. Dan Mirren, your contracts and risk manager. We know how you feel about animals. Let's see how you feel about insurance guys.
Different button.
Different button, thank you.
As long as they're seniors, it's okay.
Right. Well, I'm wearing my insurance hat today. Item 6.3 and 6.4 represent your annual renewal of insurance policies that work to cover events that may occur beyond the city's self-insurance limits. 6.3 is specific to some warfare and is relatively simple. It, the policy in question is district property and contents policy. You may recall, last year, we also had a pollution liability policy, but that's in a three-year cycle, and you won't have to address that again until fiscal 15. The policy in question remained relatively staple. Given the fact that the insurance industry as a whole has been quoting year-to-year increases of anywhere between eight and 15% across all lines, we're pleased to have been able to keep this increase at less than 1% year-to-year. So, that one comes across pretty easily. Moving on to 6.4, this is the policy specific to city operations and includes property and contents, automotive physical damage, your general liability policy, employee dishonesty policies, and tenant liability policies. We've maintained our level of coverage in all, except for two, which I'll get into. But within the property contents, general liability, and tenant liability, we saw an increase, for instance, in general liability of only 5%, again, against the eight to 15 we were expecting. So, we feel good there. Your risk team looked at coverage changes, and one by choice, the other not so much, but I'm here to discuss both.
The first one has to do with the, pardon me, yeah, with the employee dishonesty policy. That policy is allowing us to gain, the change that we're making is allowing
us to gain a 50% increase in coverage, going from $2 million to $3 million, while seeing a premium increase of only 4%. We think this is a good move on behalf of the city. Most public agencies are moving to the higher coverage limit of $3 million, because when something goes bad, it goes really bad. This brings us in line with the other agencies in the county. Of note, you know, this premium change is actually less than what our incumbent carrier had, was quoting us for the old coverage. So, we're changing carriers, we're increasing coverage, like I said, 50% more coverage for 4% in dollars. So, we're pleased with that recommendation. The biggest change in costs that you see on your grid is with respect to our automotive physical damage portion. This change in premium reflects new facts that we determined in the course of trying to renew this. There is a give and take during the renewal process, the previous three months that you weren't involved in, where we provide schedules of equipment, lists of equipment and values to the insurance brokers, so that they can go out and get quotes. In the course of this discussion, we figured out that there were assumptions made in previous policy years with respect to the value of our fleet. We were providing values to our insurer that reflected depreciated values. That is, when we buy a cop car or a truck, we depreciate over four or five years, and over time, the value of that truck, as we book it in accounting, is far less than its replacement value. Well, that's entirely different than what the insurance industry does and this policy does. We're looking for replacement value on vehicles, which is a good thing for the city, because if you're dealing with a 10-year-old dump truck, you don't have, don't want to have an insured value of zero. You'd rather replace the truck if there was an accident where we have coverage. So, we looked at our entire schedule of vehicles, and when we replaced depreciated value for replacement value, we went from a, a, a total cost of $14 million to the fleet, under the old model, to $30 million under the new, almost doubling our total pool to be insured. Now, when you've got a larger pool of vehicles to insure, your rate goes down. Fortunately, we were able to get a 24% lower rate than what we had previously. But nonetheless, that increase in value does come back as an increase in premium. We looked for a bunch of different ways to try and mitigate this, because I knew it was going to be a tough pill to swallow to come up here before all of you and recommend a higher premium. We looked at changes in deductibles, reductions in coverage, some hybrid models dealing with our depreciated value and the difference between that and replacement value. And in the end, we really could come up with no better recommendation than the one that's before you. And we think that the coverage is correct. We think the coverage is appropriate. You'll see on your grid in your staff report, if you look year-to-year for the total cost for all insurance policies, we are still 20% below where we were three years ago. Okay? The total cost of all premiums for the policies considered under this item is just short of $400,000, or roughly 37%, $37,000 or 10% above last year. But again, we're well below where we were three years ago. We feel today that our recommendation is correct. So, with that, I can take questions. We also have representatives from our broker, Wells Fargo. You may know Gary Roberts or Brandon in the audience, if you have any questions for them. Otherwise, that's what I've got.
Questions for Dan or for the insurance brokers? Mr. Carrigan?
Dan, real quick, so just to, from my understanding, so now that our fees have gone up for auto physical damage, that means it's replacement fees, correct?
Yes, sir. Fully loaded. So, if you're talking about a police car, it's not just the base crown vehicle, it's everything outfitted and done.
Yeah, and I'm more worried about the older vehicles. So, in other words, if we, like you said, you have a 10-year-old dump truck, it goes down, we're going, this is a replacement cost for what it costs today.
Yes, sir. And one of the discussions we had, talking about older vehicles, but high-visibility vehicles are the buses that we run for special events.
Right.
Okay? We, we agree that we weren't depreciating those, but we don't have an active value on them. We know to replace them is over half a million dollars a piece. Presuming you want to keep those online should we have an unfortunate accident.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion? I think we can do 6.3 and 6.4 together, is that correct, Madam Attorney?
I think the motion's made properly.
Oh, you always have to put, you always have to put a caveat on it, don't you? Okay, Mr. Schmidt.
Well, I'll try to do it properly. I move to approve items 6.3 and 6.4 as outlined by staff.
Is that proper?
That works.
Do you have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Carrigan, to approve 6.3 and 6.4 properly? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passionate, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Gary, Brandon, thank you very much, appreciate your service to us. 6.5, consideration and possible action on a request for a final approval of Crestgate Pyramid Final, Pyramid Final Plan Development Handbook. Ms. Melby? No, I'm sorry, you can't. I never really have to, I'm going to have to be, I know, wait.
Good afternoon, Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you today is a consideration and possible action on a request for a final approval of the Crestgate Final Plan Development Handbook. On April 4th, the city council tentatively approved the amendments to the handbook that would allow personal and RV storage. This agenda, I, Adam, item, I'm sorry, asks the city council to approve the final handbook. The planning commission reviewed this item on, on May 17th and is recommending approval. That concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Melby or for Mr. Crater, if there's any questions for the applicant? Mr. Lawson?
I move to approve item 6.5 as outlined by staff.
Do you have a second? She's ready?
Is that a proper motion? I don't know if she's ready.
She's busy consulting with someone else.
We have a motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Ms. Ratty, to approve 6.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passionate, with those present. 6.6 is the first reading. Thanks, Karen.
Bill numbers 2644 and ordinance amending chapter 15 of the Sparks Municipal Code, amending section 15.05.100 adoption and section 15.05.108.3.9 energy efficiency inspections to reflect the adoption of codes and local amendments and providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading for bill number 2644. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, June 25th, 2012. Any questions? Okay. Mark, I'm sorry I had to get all dressed up and not give a presentation, but you look good. You look good. You look good. Okay. Let's move on. Steve, we're not going to have to come back after we adjourn for a closed door, so let's do that after we adjourn, or after number nine. Comments from the city council and city manager? Ms. Ratty?
Just a couple of quick kudos. I got the opportunity to drop in on the Mark Wellman Adventure Day at the Marina yesterday. Great event where the community pulls together with the lead of the Parks and Recreation Department to provide access to opportunities for people with disabilities to try out all kinds of new sports. There's rock climbing wall, tricycles and bikes and kayaks and sailboats and all kinds of great things going on, hula hoops. It really was a great event, and I, I wanted to commend the Parks and Recreation Department on continuing to put that on, as well as, I'm just getting all kinds of positive feedback about the farmer's market and the way that, that's, that's going, at least from some folks who attended it, so nice job.
Yeah, that, that was great. I didn't get a chance to go down there, but the news on Channel 2 was the big story for them, and Channel 4 and Channel 8 also covered it, so we got great, great coverage, and it was really wonderful. Mr. Lawson?
Another event we can't forget about was Fishing Day. We had our first year this year that Sparks Rotary Club put on a special needs fishing day. We had about roughly 100 people attend. We had one-on-one fishing for many people that would never get to fish, and it worked out wonderful. And then, of course, we had our regular event on Saturday, the 8th, and we registered around 1,800 kids, gave away 1,800 fishing poles and 1,500 hot dogs, chips, sodas, bandanas, you name it, and all free for the community, and turned out, if the weather was just a little bit nicer, would have been nicer, but...
I was just going to ask if there's any hypermeria.
Just from the coaches and the volunteers, it was pretty cold out there.
Let me ask you a question, how did voter registration go this year?
There was no voter registration. It seemed it was too cold for some people to show up. So, but, once again, I want to thank Tracy and Tanya and Shawna for all your support on that project, and the city of Sparks is a great supporter of that Fishing Day event, so thank you again.
And let me say congratulations to the Sparks Rotary Club, because it's a fantastic...
Okay, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my congratulations too on the Sparks Fishing Day, a great, great event. Is there any possible way that we could, since I didn't realize we were under a JPA for the county animal control services, is there a way we could get a copy of the JPA and maybe some kind of outline of what our responsibilities are in that JPA?
I can tell you our responsibilities under there were to revoke all of our, our laws involving animals within the city of Sparks, and we turn over, I want to say it's a cent, Mr. Driscoll can correct me, but I believe it's a cent of our property tax to the county. Those are our two requirements under the contract.
Is there any options in the agreement for to bring it back? Is it, what, what kind of options do we have as a city after that?
Well, any contract, obviously, it, it can be amended by all the parties. I think there, there was a term there that it could be amended in writing by approval of the parties. So, you know, if the, if the parties are interested, I'm sure that those kind of discussions can be had, but as specifically, I don't remember any specific termination date, nor do I believe in there, there was any date for it to come back before anyone.
I'd like to see us kind of do maybe a presentation on this, because I was back here, I think Mr. Carrigan was, was back here when we did that, and I'm trying to, trying to remember what we can do with some options, and, you know, I think this is the first time in the 10 years that I think we've been on out there, I think we need to review, review a few things and talk about it.
Well, it certainly gets you the, the agreement, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Maybe we'll put it on an agenda, Steve, or maybe at a workshop or something.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, Steve.
Mr. Mayor, I have an announcement. Two appointments to the Civil Service Commission will expire June 30th. Each appointment is for a three-year term. There is also a vacancy on the commission for a term which will expire June 30th of 2014. Two appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission will expire June 30th. Each appointment is for a three-year term.